Welcome to the September 5th, 2023, meeting of the Surrey County Board of Commissioners. We welcome your attention attendance tonight and glad to see you folks here. And this terribly hot weather we've been having. And of course, I know the building inspectors, they have to get out in it just a bit. And we appreciate your service, appreciate y'all being here tonight. And we welcome your attendance. I'll call the meeting to order and ask Commissioner Larry Johnson to do our invocation and our pledge. If you would, please stand.
Our heavenly Father, as we come to thee, come to prayer this night, we thank thee, Father in heaven, for this opportunity to gather. We pray that this meeting will be in accordance with thy will as we conduct the business that occurred at the Surrey County. We're thankful for those that serve, those that step up, or volunteers, that will bless them all. Especially those that work for the county, all of our employees, and all of those who provide us with safety and protection. Again, we dedicate this time to thee, Father, and that we can use our common sense, wisdom, and knowledge to discuss and decide those things that are important for this this night. These things we ask and pray in Jesus' name. It is the legion, the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Gentlemen, you have your agenda tonight. What is your pleasure? Motion Commissioner Goins to approve. Second Commissioner Marion, any discussion, gentlemen? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, and the agenda is approved. You also have your meeting minutes from the 21st of August. What is your pleasure?
Motion to approve the meeting minutes of August 21st, Mr. Chairman.
And motion Commissioner Tucker to approve the minutes from 21st of August. Do I have a second? Second Commissioner Goins, any discussion? All those in favor, aye? Opposed, the ayes have it, and the meeting minutes from the 21st of August are approved. Commissioner John, Commissioner, excuse me, County Manager Chris Knopf, if you would, go through the consent agenda.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item is a request from Parks and Recreation for a software purchase. Next are insurance renewals to be executed as requested by Sandy Snow. Also, request to position reclassifications, removals, and additions. Also, budget amendment number 17. This is actually for the last fiscal year, 2223, and this is something that the auditors are wanting done and has been submitted by the Finance Officer, Laura Neely. And budget amendment number two for the current fiscal year, which is in response to the board's action last month regarding enterprise. And then finally, surplus vehicle to EMS is the final item, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Gentlemen, you have your consent agenda there. What is your pleasure?
Motion to approve consent agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Motion from Commissioner Marion to approve tonight's consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second Commissioner Johnson, any more discussion, gentlemen? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, and the consent is approved. Okay, gentlemen, we have special recognition tonight. Mr. Keith Kiger, our department head for inspections, if you would, come down front. Okay, we have a recognition tonight. We're proud to recognize Mr. Keith Kiger. He's our lead building inspector, and we're grateful for Keith's service and his accomplishments with Surrey County. We enjoy working with Keith. He brings a breath of fresh air to the inspections department, and we appreciate what he does. And once we get through with this, we'll recognize your fellow employees and stuff here. I'll read the recognition. This is from the County of Surrey to Keith Kiger, Lead Building Inspector. We hear, Keith has hereby presented this certificate of recognition for being presented the President's Choice Award by the Building Inspectors Association for contributing your time to help set up and present at conferences, helping to promote knowledge and consistency across North Carolina, serving on the education, site selection, and council of code official committees, helping to organize and host continuing education for the contractors working here in Surrey and Stokes County, and serving as area director for the North Carolina Building Inspectors Association. The Board of County Commissioners and the citizens of Surrey County are grateful to have such a highly qualified lead building inspector to dedicate his time and service to the citizens of Surrey County, presented this fifth day of September, 2023, by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Eddie Harris, Chair, Vice Van Tucker, Vice Chair, Bill Goins, Larry Johnson, and Mark Marion. And we have the President's Choice Award here for Mr. Keith Kiger. And Keith, we're proud to present this to you.
Well, thank you. It's a great honor, but I cannot do it without that crew out there, our frontline. Ann Moore, Audrey Rice, and Kelly Cummins, as they've, our new frontline, and they have been great. I've heard great comments about them, and thank you for what you've done so far and look forward to a great future. Kevin Connor is my right-hand man. I definitely couldn't do this job without him. And Terry, we worked together in Winston, Terry Parks, used to work at Winston together, got him up here with us. And we've got a great crew, and I cannot do this job without them. Very proud of where we are and where we're going to be going. And I thank you, as the commissioners, Sandy and Chris, for having our backs. It's not an easy job, but we do the best we can to keep the public safe. So, thank you. And thank you for my wife for supporting me through all this as well, too.
Okay, at this time, we will have our open forum portion of the meeting. Anyone wishing to come forward, speak on any topic of interest, to Surrey County as citizens or this governing body, we'd be happy to hear from you. So, at this time, I'll open our open forum. And if you do come forward, please state your name and your telephone number. And three minutes, thank you.
I want to break this. So, there we go, there we go. Alan Bagshaw, y'all, I've been here before, 336-909-0192. I come today to talk about the thing that brings me passion. So, if I get passionate, and I'm angry right now, but I just understand that I'm angry, and I'm going to explain why I'm angry. This dog right here, and I have a copy of it for each one of you. This dog died last week. It's the first dog in about a decade that has died because of space, not having enough space. His name was Barkley. He was good with other dogs. He was good on a leash. He was a friendly dog, and he was not given the time of day to live. Tomorrow, figure that out. Lobo and Doby die at noon tomorrow because the citizens of this county failed them. Y'all failed them, I failed them, everybody sitting out here failed them, everybody within the county failed them. No rescue has stepped up. The rescues are just as bad, if not worse, than the last time I was here. Rescues have continued to shut down. We're probably going to look at a mass exodus, a mass death over at the shelter, because every single day, there are surrenders, multiple surrenders. Under this administration and under the administration of the current Sheriff's Department, it has gotten worse. Society has gotten worse. Things have to change. You can no longer do plausible deniability. You can no longer bury your head in the sand. I'm here, you're going to see every single death, all hundreds of deaths that happen at the shelter each month. You're going to be aware of, as well as everybody else is going to be aware of. I'm tired, I'm angry, I'm frustrated, I need action. I need, I'm only able to do so much as a citizen. I need assistance, I need help. You can do that by enacting change yourselves. The Sheriff's Department, the staff at the shelter are not the ones to blame here. They're doing what they're being told at the direction of the Sheriff's Department, at the direction of the ordinances of Surrey County. You have the power to make those changes. You can enact things like pet registration with, they can be free even if they're spayed and neutered. You can do, if you surrender an animal, you're not allowed to adopt another animal. You can create some sort of position within the Sheriff's Department indoor animal shelter that tracks if you adopt an animal. Do you go get it bedded? Do you go get it spayed? Do you go get it neutered? As one of the conditions of the application that they sign, currently, that's not happening in any way, shape, or form. You can also enact a breeding breeding policy within Surrey County. Currently, you have backyard breeders who are currently breeding animals, who are then turning around and reselling those animals, and they are not being tracked by the IRS. Currently, if you sell three litters of puppies in North Carolina, you're considered a breeder. Surrey County could take the option that if you sell one animal, you're a breeder of a dog, and you have to register that. I encourage you to look at some of that kind of stuff to get it done. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for open forum? Okay, I'll close the open forum portion of our program, and we'll get right into the agenda. Mr. Chris Knopf, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just have a handful of items this evening. First is the board's 2024 meeting calendar. That's included in your packet for action this evening.
Motion to approve the calendar, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the commissioner's meeting calendar for 2024. Do I have a second? I have a motion, Commissioner Marion, do I have a second?
Okay.
Second Commissioner Tucker, any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I only have through April the 1st. In mine, did I get left out?
No. Oh, it's all that's in there?
So, we just approve until April the 1st?
Yeah, let's bring it back next month, then.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. We'll bring that back this month. Gentlemen, would you folks like to withdraw your motions?
I withdraw.
Okay. Commissioner Marion withdraws his motion. Proceed.
Next item is, there's information here from Invest in Surrey nonprofit grant reappropriation request. It's for Mountain Park Rescue Squad. They reached out to seek approval to reappropriate $8,951 of the $17,902 they received through Invest in Surrey. And this was toward the cost of a 15-foot-tall training platform or installing a culvert on the property in which they were planning to expand. The original appropriation, I think they had put some towards the land, which they did, and some towards a building. But the cost of the building at this time is prohibitive. So, they're asking for it to be, for the board to reappropriate the funds for that purpose. And that would be the training platform or installing a culvert.
And that would be the $8,951 portion?
Yes.
Okay, gentlemen. I'm familiar with this piece of property, obviously. It's in my community. And to be able to access it, it's a good location, it's cleared land, very usable. For all practical purposes, it's flat. But there is a little issue with the access coming off the highway there, and so I would be amenable to allowing them to do that, looking for a motion, if you're so inclined.
A motion to allow them to put in a culvert indoor of the tower?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Have a motion, Commissioner Tucker?
Second.
Second Commissioner Johnson, any discussion? All those in favor, aye? Opposed? The ayes have it.
All right, next item is a memo from Eric Southern, our emergency services director, regarding a fee that the, that department's been charging for some time related to citizen calls and requests for assistance for non-injury type of situations. And I'll ask Eric to come forward at this time and discuss this. I believe there was at least one board member that had brought this to our attention for discussion at a future meeting, and that, of course, being tonight.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I appreciate just a few minutes to talk about this, and I'll kind of give you a little bit of history about it. But I had a citizen that had actually had called to kind of ask why we were charging to come out and just to assist, is what we call it. We call it EMS assist fee or treatment, no transport. And to give you a little bit of history about it, we've been doing this, we think, around 15 years. It's been a very long time. And what happens, somebody will call 911, we'll send an ambulance out there, whether it's a routine or emergency. And it could be something like assistant on a person of, non-injured person off the floor. It could be a system with medical equipment. We were called out one time to help get a bat out of a house. It just depends on what particular call comes in. And what we currently have right now is if we go back to that same resident three times, after the third time, after the third time, we charge them a fee. And the fee is, I believe, around $120 right now. And like I said, we just call that EMS assist or treatment, no transport. We recently had an issue to where a person had come back home, couldn't get home health, had called 911. We went out there several times, and before they could actually get the first bill, we were out there about five or six times. So, all of a sudden, they got several bills all at once, and that's the reason why this person had called. And when we discussed it, at the end of the conversation, very nice, appreciate the time I got to speak with her about it. She kind of ended with, well, I'm not going to call 911 even if we do have emergency. That's not what we want. We want them to call us, and we don't want them to feel like we're going to go out there and we're going to nickel and dime them every time they need some. The reason why we originally had this actually set up the first time was because we were getting a lot of 911 abuse calls. People were calling us, we were going out three, four, five, six times within 24 hours to just do anything. At that particular time, I was still working on an ambulance. So, I can remember a particular call where I went out to a residence four times within 24 hours. And there was abuse that was going on at that particular time. But the reason why I want to discuss this is we look back in June, and in June, we had 4,086 treatment, no transports that were actually billed. Of those 4,086, only 14, 14 of them had insurance payments. So, we're only collecting around 35%. A lot of time, the people or the citizens that were getting the bills, it was Medicare, Medicaid, they're not going to pay for that particular charge, or we just had people that just wasn't paying in general. And so, we're catching some people who really do need our services that don't have any other help, and they're getting a fee for this that they just can't pay. And so, I really feel like we're going to have some people who need us, and they're not going to call for us because of that reason. We don't really have a way that we can actually express this to the people when we go out there and we talk to them, if we go out to their house, because you might have an ambulance go today, and then it might be a week when another ambulance goes. So, the EMS providers are going out, they really don't know if they've already been out there one, two, or three times based on just previous history sometimes. They can look back on it, but a lot of times, we just don't know what it is until the billing company gets it, and then they send them a bill.
Gentlemen?
Eric, this is, so when you say you're going to, your proposal is to charge a person $75 fee on the third time. Currently, they're being charged on the first time, whether they are able to pay for it or not. Our third-party biller, they do, that does generate a charge?
They get charged on the third time that we go out to that residence.
Currently, the?
That's currently what the policy is.
And what do they get charged on the third time?
That it stays the same. So, we run out there three times. When we go out there the fourth time, they get a bill at that time, and then it's always the same $120 charge each time that we go back out there.
So, you're proposing to change it from 120 to 75?
No, I'm saying we need to look at it all together and see if we need to continue this policy or not. Yes, ma'am.
The memo says 75 is where, I mean, I don't know, it just says?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, okay. It is a $75 fee, I'm sorry. I was thinking about a different charge, but it is a $75 fee that we are charging now.
So, that's my next question. So, that's what we currently charge them is $75.
Yes, sir.
That's what our third party is charging?
Yes, sir.
They're charging them on the first charge or the third charge?
After the third charge. We'll actually go out there three times.
Okay, so what is you want to do different than we're doing now?
I believe we need to look at the policy altogether because based on our collection rate for this, we're really not collecting, and we have citizens that's not calling 911 when they actually do need to call us.
Yeah, and I know it's, I know a lot of them are falling in the floor and I can't get up, and so they call you. And I, you know, that's an issue, but it's also an issue that in 2015, we had 111 of these incidents. And in 2022, we had 774.
Yes, sir, that's where we're at right now.
Of course, more than seven times, well, about seven times exactly. It increases in seven years, it's, yeah, it's increased sevenfold. And you anticipate looking at through May that it's going to be probably as much as it was last year. You're projecting, you know? I think we got two or three different issues here. I mean, are you proposing we don't charge anything? Are you proposing you using this as an illustration for us to take up the issue of whether or not we even ought to charge them anything in the future? Is that what you're just opening up the discussion tonight?
Yeah, I like it to be discussed at least, so we can look at it. We do have two things that are going for us right now that we did not have 15 years ago. And one of those is the working relationship we have with DSS. So, anytime that our crews are going out and we're finding patients that are in bad living conditions, don't have family support, whatever it may be, and they're going out there and helping them, we're having those that are actually being looked at by our compliance officer and the Department of Social Services. So, if we can kind of get ahead of that, we can help them get placement, we can help them get assistance that they need. Another program that we've got in place right now is our mobile integrated health program. We started that with the grant money to help with the overdose. With these medics that are actually working now, they're running these calls, and a lot of these overdoses and drug abuse situations kind of go hand in hand on some of these calls. So, they're actually able to communicate, talk with them, kind of get them assistance as they go along. So, we've got two programs in place right now, but I do think this does warrant some discussion because we're going to catch those people who actually need us, and they're not going to call for us.
Yeah, that's certainly an issue, I think. The other issue is when you was on the road 800 times or thereabouts, that was 800 times you couldn't be at a heart attack or car wreck or?
And I was on those calls. The particular call that I gave you an example of just a minute ago, the one that I had run four times in one shift, we were on scene, and we were the last ambulance in the county.
Yeah.
And we couldn't leave.
I realize that these are patients, some of them, they're not going to pay you anyway, but I don't know, just, I'll just kind of speak my mind on it. Something about just taking on a policy that says, well, this type of sector of population and people that we serve, you know, 800 calls a year for, since we can't collect much anyway from Medicaid or Medicare, and nobody wants to pay, we're just, you know, I wouldn't be for doing away with the service. I mean, if they can't pay, they can't pay. But I think there's something, I think, I don't know, I just have a little problem with that message that, you know, some people call an ambulance and they expect a $120 charge or whatever. And then others expect to call an ambulance and have be no charged if they call it six times in 24 hours. I think that sends the wrong mess.
Personal responsibility.
Yes.
What, to what do you attribute a over 700% increase since 2015? Eight years, over 700% increase in this sort of, in these calls?
A lot of it is just the services that are offered now. Like I said, we, when we started the mobile integrated health program, we've got that message out there that we have these services that are available. With the overdose and the drug abuse calls that we are seeing, that message is getting out that we have these services that can help. And so, we actually do have a percentage of the population that needs further assistance, but they won't get it. So, they call 911. And so, that kind of goes back to what Mr. Tucker was talking about.
So, are you attributing it to drug abuse?
Some of it, yes, sir.
Five, five, a third of it, don't know, look, any guess?
No.
Yeah. Took any action to charge or to not charge? What does the other counties do, Eric?
It's kind of a mix right now. There are some counties that actually have had this charge for a while. They developed other services, they took their charge away, and there are some counties that are just now adding this charge on them. So, it's really just?
Some are just now adding the charge. So, if you had a policy that if you just, it was non-immersive, and you just had a policy that you just didn't generate a bill, I mean, wouldn't that mean that some people that were perfectly capable of paying, even if it were a few, would not have to chart, would not have to pay you either?
Yes, sir.
And that's the problem I have with, I think that messaging is?
Well, the problem I have is the serial violators and the people that abuse this at the expense of people who would need it only maybe one or two times a year. You know, you're penalizing, if we do away with the policy, it seems, well, the, and this is the case all throughout government, people that abuse the system. The system's supposed to work for everybody, and the folks that abuse it cause great harm to the folks that respect it.
Yes, sir.
And I don't know how to fix some of those things.
I don't either. I mean, I have had, I'm sure you gentlemen have folks to call me and say, I got an ambulance bill for such and such amount of money. I mean, it's the only time I've ever called it in my life. I mean, you know, I was, I didn't even really want to go to the doctor, but the guy that checked me said, well, you need to go, you know, your heart might be, you know, you might be having a heart attack, which sometimes, I'm sure there are. But they fuss about that.
I had an individual problem.
Yeah.
And not somebody that I think abuses, that abuses the system. Needed it, has used it more than three times, gotten a bill, good, you know, good people, and she's been in charge. And she, you know, she asked me, and I think she asked a good question. She said, you know, I pay tax, I pay taxes for, to go to pay for EMS. I mean, it's probably the same one that you talked about. You know, what, you know, why do I pay taxes as part of it? And part of me agrees with that a little bit, and this is one chart right here. This is false. Overdoses. Add the layers on that number.
Increase of the?
Increase. I'd like to see a comparison of other things that we do that I know people don't pay for. And actually, we're giving them free drugs, free drugs on top of that. Free drugs on top of that, uh, you see what I'm saying? So I've got my mom, my mom who's elderly and she needs some assistance three times and, you know, she can't afford to pay, I, I'd feel bad for her to have to, have to pay. I get it, there's some people that can afford it. There's some people that can't. I don't know, I don't know how you keep up with that, I don't know, I don't know the system there. But, but that's just false. When you get into other things, we doing it for free.
Yeah.
We, we are doing it for free.
Kind of what I'm saying, Commissioner.
It's like serving on the hospital board, you know, we, our hospital involuntary commitments and those type things, our hospital does that, they do it for free. Uh, they make no money, that's part of why we struck, our hospital struggles on that side because they do it for free. Uh, not saying it's right. Uh, but this lady does have a point. I pay, I do pay my taxes, pay my taxes every year. And why, why am I paying my taxes if, if, you know, I don't ask for much? But I need, I've needed some help a few times and now I've gone over a few times and the charge. Maybe, maybe we need to look at number of times. Resets or whatever, you know, maybe bring something back to us and say, you know, let's, let's reach a compromise or whatever, I'd be, I'd be, I'd be willing.
Yeah, and I think I was, that was part of what I was saying, you know, I. Not having a fee for service would make a big change to the bottom line. Yeah, we all pay taxes. But I can tell you, if we don't do fee for service and we didn't have a third party biller, we have now that's generating hundreds of thousands of dollars, I can tell you the people that are paying taxes for the EMS service will pay a lot more. So, you know, it's fee for service when you need it, but it's also taxes to look after the fellow man even when you might not need it particularly yourself. So I think just going across and just saying we're not going to have a charge going forward on these kind of calls. I think, I just think that's the wrong message, I'm, I'm willing to have some discussion, but you know, yeah, yeah, I think we're on the same page.
Mr. Johnson.
I, I have a concern, or I'll just say a question. All right, we did not, we always did this, you said that we started this like fifteen years ago and it just kept getting bigger and bigger and bigger. Are we obligated? I mean, who, I mean, I mean, we obligated to go and help somebody out of the floor? I mean, I, I, I'm just asking a question.
I'll give you a little bit more history with it. Originally, before we had got into this fee, uh, the volunteers, the rescue squads, the fire departments, they were responding and helping people up out of the floor, so they was never charged for that. When we started seeing more and more people that was calling, the volunteers quit going. And then EMS started responding. And then that was part of the reason why, because we were seeing that same type of abuse that was going into it.
So are you saying that as a rule, when, when they call nine-one-one, they never dispatch a fire department or a rescue squad to get somebody up out of the floor because they fallen?
They're also called.
They're also.
But is it their policy to go or not go?
They are still dispatched.
And firemen as well?
Yes, sir.
Well, so, all right, so they have a choice, the volunteers have a choice, because they're volunteers.
Right.
Uh, so I asked my, asked my question, I says, who's, what obligations? Uh, we, we, you have a paid staff. So is that an obligation that you have to go, uh, on a non-emergency call? I mean, you're, you're emergency services. I mean, are you anymore than, I mean, that's my question, I mean, we're just doing this out of the goodness of our heart? Or did we make a resolution or whatever some years ago that this is what we're going to start doing? Or we just, it's just, it's just, it's grown into this?
It's kind of grown. It's kind of grown into this, they call nine-one-one or they call the non-emergency line and they say, I'm hurt or I can't get up out of the floor, or I don't think I need somebody out here emergency, you know, just send me an ambulance. And then that's how we get involved.
Neste counties is the fire department respond versus EMS?
Yeah. Yep.
And, but out in the county and the volunteer, that's just only when they're available, that how they're dispatched?
Yes.
So they might get the first call, then they can't go, then you go.
Well, if they all get the same call is my understanding.
They're still paged, I mean, there's sometimes, based on when the telecommunications takes the call, you know, they'll go through.
So there's a good possibility if the volunteers show up. How many, how many different people could show up to help somebody get up out of the floor?
It just depends. It just depends.
Well, I'm just saying, you could have.
Yeah, you might have one, you might have three. You know, it, it just depends.
Are you called as quick as they are or when they can't do it?
We're, we're paged at the same time.
Paged.
Everybody's paged at the same time.
Well, I, I have a thought that, I know it's just hard to say, we're not going to do this anymore. But can we communicate? I mean, I like the charge, I mean, but you're going to find, what'd you say, thirty percent or paying?
Yeah, it's.
Something like that now? And it's probably.
Thirty-five percent.
Probably get less and less, but, uh, is there a way that we can find out who's going to respond? Jimmy, you might help with that, I mean, you know, C-Com makes a call. Somebody's called nine-one-one and, and, and it is determined by a conversation that it's not, not an emergency. Not a life threatening or whatever, they just need some help. After that, could there be some type of communication? To say, it's like we need to send two people, is the fire department boys going, are we going? I mean, I know it only takes, I don't know, you might do it in a minute, I don't know, but I mean, I just hate for everybody to have to rush in on the same call, for a non-emergency. That, that does get expensive.
It really has to wrinkle down.
Being it's non-emergency, is there a way that, uh, so listen, uh, you know, we're, we're not, is anybody, can anybody do this, but, you know, can, I, I just hate to see it. The people deserve it, I mean, I, I know several that, uh, they brag, they brag about, oh boy, I got put up in a motel last night because my house might get flooded. And, you know, who pays for that?
Right.
Know what I mean? Or anyway. I've seen you get stuck in snowstorms for something I knew. Responding to calls. But I'm just, I'm just saying, you know, what, what, how much, how much can we do? I mean, if we're not obligated, you know, we, we could, I know we're talking about a fee or a charge right now, but I'm just saying that maybe we could cut if we could communicate a little bit better. Somehow, if it's not, how long does it take? We don't have, maybe, uh, maybe that person can wait an extra minute, you know, until we decide who's going. Who can go? You know, with, with your modern technology, your radios or whatever you got, or text or whatever. Uh, is anybody from Franklin, anybody from Franklin going? Save y'all from having to go, or vice versa. You know, I'll go because there's nobody available.
Well, it's already been identified as a non-emergency.
That's what I'm saying.
You got a little bit more time to be creative, don't you?
Well, and that, that's the shift, because originally it was the volunteers that were going, and once those volunteers stopped, we actually had calls that were pending for some time. And then EMS would get dispatched. So through the years, it's just rolled over to where EMS is just automatically dispatched because of the volunteer departments.
Well, I could see a volunteer getting pretty aggravated going to the same home for the same purpose. Often. For really. And I really, I really see, I think it's some type of a waste that we have to pay, pay personnel. But see, that's the choice, you know, it used to be neighbor helping neighbor and I wouldn't have all that stuff, but now it's, we smite. And I, I think, remember Chairman Harris many months ago says, people think governments, they can solve everything. You know, you know, but, but that's my thought, I, I was thinking, I like to keep the fee like they are, you get what we can get. And the ones that want to say, hey, I pay my taxes, they still have a choice whether they're going to pay the bill or not.
Right.
I reckon, you're still not, but if, if, being you broken up in discussion, Mr. Chairman, I like to see those powers to be to talk a little bit, maybe perhaps how we could cut down of those that do respond, you know, a little, little communication, you know. C-Coms is, they, they do their job. But, uh,
So, and what I hearing, we need to clean this up in our ordinance, um, in our policy. And you folks are looking for EMS to bring back some sort of, um, options? Is that what I'm hearing?
I think we need to include all of our, all of our, uh, all of our volunteer, I mean, uh, the cities don't have this problem, I mean, they take care of this, is that right?
So like Mallory Fire, they do not run assist calls, they run emergency calls.
So if they call into Mallory, you live in the city limits and say, I'm falling in the floor and can't get up, but I'm not hurt, they're not going to go out?
You'll get Mallory Rescue Squad and EMS.
I see.
Oh mercy, okay, misunderstood.
Now, and is that true sometimes for the other volunteer fire departments or just maybe or maybe not, depending on who's on call or who's? Do they pretty generally? Is that, have they passed that torch to you because I know they're short on volunteers and I know they're short on manpower and I'm not trying to say they're not doing their part, I'm just simply saying, is it something they just don't do much anymore?
They do not, no.
They do not do it anymore. Understand, so you pretty much are the only game in town. Those that say, I don't have an emergency, but I'm in the floor and I can't get up and you need to come out here. And I, and I agree with you, Mr. Johnson, uh, that sounds unfair for a volunteer to have to do that, but it's also, I think it sounds unfair for a county government, uh, sponsored by its taxpayers to have to do that too.
It's my understanding, Mr. Chairman, we don't have a policy, this is just by the goodness of our heart, it's being done.
Well, that's one concern I've got, you know, if you're sending out bills with no county policy, that's a.
Well, I know it's a practice, but, uh, we need to have something formalized in, uh,
This is kind of the reason for the discussion.
Yeah.
And I appreciate it.
For sure.
Yeah. Well, I agree with that, Mr. Chairman, except I'm not, I'm not, I think it does send the wrong message just to do away with the charge, so I'm not for that. So if you, if, if Mr. Southern will bring back some other options and some, what some other counties do and how they do it, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel, I'm sure our problem's not much different than a lot of others than, but I don't think taking away the fee is, is something I would.
We do have some paid firefighters in the county that can answer, help answer these calls also. But, you know, if we do away with the fee and, you know, some people are going to, are going to pay the bill and some are not. And I believe you made the comment that you've even been called to get a bat out of a house. And you do away with a fee? People get, know that they're, they're not going to have to pay for anything.
Might be catching.
You go, you go, you go get fifteen hundred calls instead of seven hundred and fifty-one.
Yes, sir.
So I'd like to, I'd like to see, come up with some ideas and, and some comparisons. Like Commissioner Goins said, uh, add the layers to it and, uh, see what we come up with. Well, and all we've been talking about, we've talked all these different things, but it all comes down to money. All comes down to money, the, our, our cities don't do it. You know, they'll, they will take care of the emergency stuff and that's it. All this other stuff, we're doing it out of the goodness of our heart, from what I understand, so, uh, so, but the key is it's costing us a lot of money to get a bat out of the house. Or, or these repeat folks that says, all I gotta do is pick up a phone.
They call nine-one-one.
Yeah, that's all I gotta do, and I have to, I have to admit, there's, was it seven times in how many years, seven, seven, ten times in what, ten years or something?
Seven, seven hundred and twenty.
And it's going to get, it's not going to get any better.
Right.
One hundred.
We need, I ain't saying we need to cut it off, but I'm saying, like our chairman says, this, this, we need to have a, I'd like to recommend those powers to be, Mr. Chairman, and, and maybe, uh, some others, uh, you know, if it needs to be a commissioner too or whatever. County manager and such as, put all of our heads together. We don't do so much, the way I see it. Somebody might get left out possibly.
Yep.
Do, do you think it, from the policy we do have or the practice we do have, even though we don't have a policy that specifically addresses this? Do you think, you think the county's liable for refusing to respond to a nine-one-one call that is identified as, this is not an emergency, but I need you anyway? You, you think, I mean, you you are the emergency services.
They have aid on the phone.
Manager, what do you think, what's other guys, like you say, across the state, do they, do they, are they concerned with that issue?
There is, there's precedents, there's been said about not responding to a call.
Even though they were identified on nine-one-one as a non-emergency?
Yeah.
Gentlemen, um, the, the best policy is to have a written policy on what's an emergency call and what's not, because leaving it to someone's discretion without, uh, protocol is risky, I think.
Yep.
Well noted, uh, Mr. Wolf. Okay, so, um, you want to bring this back next meeting or the first meeting in October?
As soon as, uh, we have something formulated, we'll bring it back to the board.
Okay, all right, bring it back. Thank you for a very good discussion, Eric.
Do you want him to still continue what he's doing, Mr. Chairman?
Uh, Mr. Attorney, you want to weigh in on that? Uh, the question.
Yeah, I, I, I understand the question and, uh, um, it, it, until we have a policy, it's, it's a hard question to answer. I think, um, what we've been doing consistently, we continue until we have a policy, but I think we need a policy up and running as quick as we can get one. And I, I really think that knowing what other similarly situated counties do is going to be really enlightening on what we do. And maybe some conversation with the school of government is also in order.
Okay, as well as our peer counties in Northwest North Carolina?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, so noted. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to go back and revisit item one.
Okay.
You have both pages now, I believe.
All right, gentlemen, you have the, uh, Commissioner's calendar for the two thousand and twenty-four year and with the additional page through December. So what is your pleasure?
I'll make that motion to pass the two thousand and twenty-four calendar.
Okay, I have the, uh, Commissioner's calendar for motion for Commissioner Marion to approve for two thousand and twenty-four, do I have a second? It was Commissioner Marion.
I mean, you said, okay, second.
Commissioner Tucker seconds, any discussion, gentlemen? All those in favor, aye? Oppose, the ayes have it, and the calendar is approved for two thousand and twenty-four.
All right, next item, you know, there's a boards and committees, uh, memo from, from Andrew Wright. Uh, there's, uh, three seats, uh, four-year terms expiring on the Board of Trustees of Northern Regional Hospital. Commissioners can consider reappointment, new appointments, whatever the pleasure of the board is. Uh, same with the Surrey County Board of Health, Commissioner Johnson and three others, uh, their three-year terms are expiring. And then, of course, we've had the three vacant seats on the Surrey County Nursing Adult Care Homes Community Advisory Committee. A relation of Board of Health, those we would need, if you want to consider reappointment, we need to confirm that they're willing to reappoint. And if you'll let us know that, we'll, we'll be happy to do that. And I think Commissioner Johnson had stated earlier that, uh, he believes the three individuals for the Board of Trustees at the hospital are willing to serve another term. Um, so we're just bringing that before you this evening.
Okay, gentlemen, uh, Board of Trustees, Northern Regional Hospital of Surrey County, what is your pleasure?
Monty Venable, uh, Philip Snow and Doug Cook for four-year terms. Four-year term.
Okay, I have a motion Commissioner Goins to, um, reappoint Monty Venable, Philip Snow and Doug Cook to the Northern Regional Hospital, the Surrey County Board, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Johnson seconds, any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Uh, Surrey County Board of Health, Commissioner Johnson, what is your pleasure here?
Well, I have, these individuals, Barbara Long, Drew Nolan, Jay Wade White Junior have all been very diligent in their service. And if they're willing to continue to serve, I would like to make a motion that we reappoint.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Johnson to, uh, reappoint, uh.
And Larry Johnson also.
Uh, Commissioner Larry Johnson, Barbara Long, Drew Nolan, Jay Wade White Junior. Have a second. Have a second, the second Commissioner Goins, any discussion? All those in favor, aye? Oppose, the ayes have it. Surrey County Nursing Adult Care Homes Community Advisory Committee, three seats we need on there.
Can I, can I, can I say something about?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Whatever.
I, I don't know. I don't know where you got. I mean, this must be something on your records about three seats. But I think this is what I volunteer to serve on, me and my wife and some other couples. Uh, and it's very, very minimal right now. Uh, uh, that there's no limit to what can serve on this. You have to be approved by the, uh, regional council there in Connerville. And, uh, I'm an exception on it because I'm a commissioner, but that they accepted me because I was willing to serve, I guess. But, uh, this is a, this is an ongoing thing, uh, gentlemen on the board. Uh, what the, what these folks do is actually go visit the twelve nursing homes or rest homes that's listed, uh, in the county. And, uh, and we're very minimal. When I first volunteered, there was a bunch of old people. And now there's, now there's a bunch of old people. And, uh, it, this limited, in fact, we talked about a little bit that they're going to really need to, uh, uh, build it up and, uh, so there's really no, there's no policy, in my opinion, there's no, no commissioner is appointed to this at all. It's just something that's volunteer, but so do we even, should this even be brought to us?
It's always been brought in the past.
It's always been brought in the past and we actually approve of those that serve. Okay. Well, all right. Uh, I think we might have a few that's been serving a while that we haven't formally approved in.
Okay, you want to bring something back?
Yeah, well, Commissioner Johnson, we'll clean it up.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Very good. Yes, sir. Thank you.
That's all that we have. We do not have a request for closed session this evening after general county business.
Okay, um, general county business, gentlemen, uh, y'all have anything? Commissioner Johnson, I'll start with you.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have just one item. I'd like to go ahead and publicly announce that, uh, I will not seek a third term serving as a county commissioner. And I thought it's, I know it's about three months until people actually sign up. So I, I thought I'd give them, uh, ample time to make a call if they'd love this easy job or not. So, uh, they have two meetings a month. And, uh, but I, I have, uh, talked with my family and, and others and, uh, and I've decided that two terms will be enough for me. So I'm going to make that official tonight that I will not seek a third term serving as Surrey County Commissioner representing the Mallory District. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Um, I'm sure that we're grateful for your service and the time you've been here and, uh, uh, I think you've, uh, done your job well.
I still got a while to go, but sign up times December, so, uh, I thought I'd go ahead and all of those is waiting for me to make it official. I made it official.
Good enough. All right. Mr. Tucker, anything?
Uh, nothing. Just appreciate everybody's participation, county employees and you fellows and the discussion. Eric, very enlightening. Be looking forward to seeing if we can help fix that policy and, uh, Mr. Fire Marshal Jimmy, good to see you here and thanks Sheriff's Department representation here tonight and, uh, thank you all for coming. That's it, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Goins, you have anything? No?
I just got one thing, uh, as a, those of you that watched Surrey on the go, there was a great video on past couple of weeks, uh, about the litter problem. And, uh, it's a great job that BCA Contracting is doing for the county. A lot of positive comments on, on the video and, and the cleaning up of the roads. And I'll just reiterate what, uh, Jessica Montgomery said, if you know of a road that you think needs cleaning up, all you got to do is contact Public Works. So, uh, they're doing a great job, but, uh, it's a never-ending struggle. So, uh, help keep your county clean and, uh, make Surrey County beautiful. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Marion. Well put. And I agree one hundred percent. Thank you. All right. I don't have anything, so, um, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.
Motion Commissioner Tucker to adjourn. Second, Commissioner Goins, any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes.